We're going to get started with Board of Selectmen Special Meeting Tuesday, October 12th, 2021 at 7:01 because of our good natured banter. We're going to start with calling the meeting in order, which it just did, the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, I need to interrupt real quick. I'm not the host, so I can't record this meeting. I see Nick is on.
No, Eric is supposed to.
Okay, so I don't know if you need to start over, Jeff?
Recording in progress.
Sorry. Okay, so we have just started our meeting and the public, you've just missed the Pledge of Allegiance. We're going to move on to a public speak, which is the most important, and we're going to start with Kathy Plazey. Kathy and Mike Plazey, are you guys interested?
We are here. Yes, then thank you very much. I would like to direct my comment, and I don't see her here, to Amanda. I wanted to thank Amanda for the excellent job she did on organizing the ordinances and the RAM Board of Education question on our website. They were easy to view and print out for the town meetings. She did a really good job on those.
All right, is that it? Does Mike, Mike have anything he wants to add?
Want to speak?
No.
No, we said.
Okay, perfect.
He's coming.
All right, Diane Choquette.
No, I'm good, thanks.
All right, thank you. And we have one phone number that I'm not aware, and if that's Mr. O'Brien, I apologize. Two, actually. We'll go with the one that ends in 6722 first. Okay, anything for public speak? No? Okay.
Yes, hello?
Yes.
Yes, hi. I couldn't get my camera to work here, so I just called in.
Sure. Your name?
Chris Saunders.
Okay, Chris, your floor is yours.
Yes, back in the first of September, well, first I lived at 14 Dogwood Drive. And back first part of September, we had, my basement had like 20 inches of water in it. It was because, I guess, the footing, well, I know why, the footing drains heading out to the street got blocked. When the house was built, I guess there was a connection provided for the drains. You could tie into the drains that led into the catch basin. And that got blocked near this connection. So I, you know, I had a power snake and I fixed that and I called Mark Williams. He came out and he ran a camera through the pipes just to check what it was. And in this situation where the pipe runs out to the street, there was no catch basin. So when, I guess, everything was being built, the street or whatever, they just ran a pipe down to the catch basin, which is at a lower level. And when he ran the camera down, this pipe is like a four inch flex pipe that just is not straight. It's all over the place. And so what I'm worried about is that this issue is going to happen again. And so I called the town and I asked, you know, is there anything that we could do? Because it's on, I guess, town property. It's right near the main pipe for the catch basins going down. And a couple people, you know, I'm sorry, there's nothing we can do for you. And I'm just kind of questioning that if there's something that possibly the town can do to help me out with this. Now, Mark made a couple suggestions. Instead of digging up like 120 feet and actually digging up somebody at my neighbor's driveway, if possible, maybe a catch basin could be put in right in front of the house. But anyways, you know, I don't know all the details or whatever, but it was just, you know, you call in, you know, over the phone, sorry, there's nothing we can do for you. And I don't know, I just think it would be nice if sometimes the town would want to try to help the residents of the town. And so that's kind of what I'm calling, if there's possibly a way to just take a look at this and maybe there's something that we could do together. I don't know. But that's, that's it.
Good. We'll actually talk about that at some other meeting, but we will sit there and see if we can get you an answer. It may not be the answer you're looking for, but we'll try to get you some information.
Okay.
Yeah. Jerry Wright is on the line. Jerry, would you like to go?
I don't think he understands that it's a special meeting, so we can't add to the agenda.
I'm not adding to the agenda.
I understand, but I don't, the resident was.
We're not, we're not talking about it at this meeting. I said it.
Because we can't add to the agenda.
That's understood. Yeah, we're going to move on. Jerry Wright.
Hi, Jeff.
Hi, how are you?
Hi, board members. Jeff Murray, I have a question for you. How is the Creamery sign coming along? Is that? People coming off rails for trails and they want to know when that sign is going to be ready.
It was going to be ready for November 11th, but there was a thing about the color sample of the material. And I made the executive decision to wait another two weeks, so it'll be the middle of November, around Thanksgiving, that it will be there.
Okay.
Because I just want to make sure at this point, we've waited long enough. I want to make sure the color and everything was correct. So they were going to try to get it for Veterans Day, but I just, I just decided, let's just make sure it's right and the colors are correct.
Right.
And right around Thanksgiving, it will be there.
Yep. Okay, to update you real quickly, the flagpoles that were hoping to be here the next week or so, they backordered because they can't get the shafts. They said it might be another couple of weeks, so three weeks before they come in. And they're still hoping to have them in by Veterans Day. He said, well, bring them over as soon as they come in, we'll bring them over and put them in. So we're just waiting on that. The grant came in at $3,000. We needed 5,500. And the brick money is going to kick in the rest of the 2,500. And we're going to put on three solar lights on top. They've got 32 LEDs in them. And it's going to make a nice light coming down to light up the monuments in that area. Right now, we have $7,200 in brick money. That's in the account in the town and $13,000 at the American Legion. The Battlefield Cross is being made. He got jammed up. He had three people out of four got sick. And they're just starting to come back into work, so he's two or three weeks behind. And that's going to be somewhere around $8,000. We're working on a really nice piece of grant, about the black granite to put that monument on. And I'm not sure what that's going to be yet. As far as price goes, we're hoping to have that today, but he didn't send it to me. The POW MIA monument is being made in New Hampshire. He's waiting for a granite base. And as soon as the granite base is here, it's $3,200. It's a monument. It's got the POW emblem on both sides. So it's going to be set. You'll see the holes. The holes are all dug for right now down at the park. The walkways all cut out and they'll be putting that in tomorrow. They're going to put the bases in. So when the monuments are ready, all we got to do is set them up, groom and set them on. It'll be done.
Jerry, how close are we between, so the walkway money, is that covering the walkway at this point? Or is that covering some of these other items as well?
It's covered some of the other items as well. It depends on where we pull the funds out of, but we're going to be really close to the nickel. So I'm speaking in Norwalk Saturday night to about 100 Vietnam veterans. And I did spoke at West Point on Saturday. I passed out a lot of brochures. So I'm hoping that they'll be kicking in some money out there as well. And but once the walkways in and Ron has paid for the work that he's done for the materials, then we can put the monuments in when we get the money.
Do we have a total from him yet?
No, because he just started today.
Oh, the irrigation, you mean?
Yeah, well, the irrigation has nothing to do with me. That's through the town.
Yeah.
So that's Eric and Jay will probably brief you on that.
So what was Ron working on today?
Putting irrigation in and then he dug the second walk, third walkway.
Okay.
And he dug the monument bases. So we'll have the concrete bases all. I got the size of the monuments, okay? So all he's got to do is make the concrete basis to fit the monuments.
So when you get a total on all of this, can you get us something so that we know where you're at fundraising wise and where we're at? So we have an idea of cost here?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Yep, it's all, everything that I'm doing is being funded through donations.
Okay.
So it doesn't cost the town a nickel.
Well, you said something about, there was some town stuff, so I'm just making sure that we have enough put aside for you, that's all.
Right. Whatever you do with irrigation and power, that's up to you.
Yeah.
Okay. And that's about all I got. I mean, it's just, it's a work in progress, you know?
Thanks, Jerry.
We sold eight more bricks the last, last, a day or so. I know I've got five more coming in. And so it just keeps on and on. We just keep adding it up and putting it in there.
Okay. Jerry, thank you very much. And I know the last phone number on there is Dennis O'Brien. Dennis, thank you for joining us. We're going to move on from a public speak. There is no additions and deletions to the agenda since this is a special meeting. So we're going to move on to item four, Board and Commission Presentations. Eric, are there any?
There are not.
All right. Eric, since you're the host, can you mute as many of the residents as possible? Okay, we're going to move on to item five, Appointments, 5A, William Bell Custodian. Eric?
Uh, yep, so per your verbal approval, I have hired Mr. Bell to be the town's custodian. It's part-time position, not to exceed 10 hours a week, but technically you as a board should ratify that.
Okay, I'll sit there and I'll do this. I motion to approve the hiring of William Bell Custodian as part-time position, not to exceed 10 hours per week.
Second in.
Okay, further discussion? All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? No? Five, nothing. Okay. So we're going to move on to item six, Resignations. Eric, are there any resignations that we need to be made aware of?
There are not that we need to be aware of here.
All right. We'll go on to item seven, the Town Administrator. Eric?
Okay, you've all had the Town Administrator's report. I'm going to just give you just a couple of things that have changed since the time I gave you the report. First thing, we do have a verbal report from the DOT on the Bunker Hill Bridge culvert. We do not have it in writing. They are all on vacation this week. They are referring it to their load calculations division at DOT. I don't have a firm date as when you will have a load calculation for that bridge. The DOT instructor or inspector basically said, from his perspective, it's in equivalent or better condition now than it was prior, than it was the last time they inspected it, which was prior to all the flooding and the sinkhole occurrence. So, I mean, from his perspective, he said he didn't have any problem with us opening it up, but that is the board's decision and we will, we should have a formal report, you know, in hopefully another week. I don't know how long it's going to take to get the load calculations done. The second thing related to that bridge is CJM, which is Close Jensen and Miller, thinks that they should be ready to schedule a design meeting with the town sometime in the middle of November. At that point, they will be through all the preliminary stuff for the bridge design and they will have settled on a design type. And that's basically their chance to brief the town and get input back from the town before they put that to DOT. And it goes, once DOT agrees with their conclusions and that all the preliminaries are correct, it will get handled off to a structural engineering firm for the actual bridge design. But this is the hardest part is getting all the preliminary stuff done, which hopefully will be done in the next couple of weeks. That is what I have unless you have questions for me.
In your report, it stated that the light is still, the light at 316 and, well, really at Long Hill Road still has issues? Has that been, that has been corrected?
That has been corrected. Sorry, I did not update that portion of my report. They have finally made the transition to the camera-based detection system and the detection sequence and timing and the timing for the crosswalks are to spec. DOT has said that they expect within the next week or so, the crosswalk itself will be repainted. She couldn't tell me exactly when that's going to happen, but that should be done fairly quickly.
Okay. Did we get some qualified candidates for the Building Department position? And where is this, what's the status right now of the Assistant Town Clerk's position?
So we had quite a few applications for both positions. We have currently interviewed four people for the Building Department position. We have another four that we are scheduled to interview for tomorrow. And then we're possibly going to try to fit in one more to interview for a total of nine. There were more than 20 total applications for that position, but we whittled it down and, you know, interviewed either eight or nine depending.
Okay. On the town hall project section of your report, have we done anything or have we moved forward anywhere related to the oil tanks and the electrical?
We have not. I have asked for quotes for that from two vendors. Neither one of us has given me final numbers on that, which is a slight irritation, but that's life.
Okay. All right, anyone else have any questions for Eric related to his report or any other issues?
Just a question on the BCS site work, excavation and site work.
Correct.
So is that on an hourly basis or is that based on the initial design that we handed over to the, to that group?
So where are you seeing that?
And over proposed community center signed contract with BCS Group for excavation and site work.
Oh, excavation slash site work. They're not really doing, the only real excavation that's going to be occurring would be test pits for the, for the septic system, which will be done by Public Works. So that is just the cost for the survey and the site work design for the community center.
Okay. I just, I saw excavation site work and that implies to me that we're digging a lot of holes besides that, so.
That was an error on my part.
No problem. Do we, do we, are our guys dig the holes for the power down at the monument?
They did.
Okay, great. And they're, so they're starting, they're starting right now with doing the irrigation?
So the, yeah, work right now is being done on the irrigation system as well as most of the electrical work has been done at this point. Rick has basically, Public Works did all the digging and helped Rick with the conduit. The conduit is in. Randy, the building official, inspected it today.
Oh, so we start backfilling. That was my next question. Great.
Yeah, as far as I know, they're ready. I didn't ask that Randy that specifically, but I think they're ready for backfill.
Okay.
So just so I understand it, so the trench was there for three or four days and that was just because we didn't have an inspection completed?
Well, you know, you've got to dig it completely and then you've got to do all the electrical work and then you've got to put the plumbing and get the plumbing going and then you have to backfill. And it's got to get inspected before you do that.
Understood, but that conduit, it was in there for three or four days, so it was just waiting for the inspection.
It was, I think Rick finished, well, Rick was still putting conduit in Monday when I stopped by, so.
Was finished before then.
Yeah.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay, we'll move on to item eight on the agenda, Old Business. We're going to discuss and act upon the following, A, the complaint log. So did everyone have a chance to read the complaint log?
Yep.
I'm going to recommend that that complaint log is sent to us separately. I don't really believe that that should be in our full package.
Welcome to the.
Okay, so Eric, can you mute the people or transfer this to Paula? Okay. So the complaint log, does anybody have any issues with any of the items that were addressed there? Anyone want to talk about any of them?
No.
No, is there a reason that we don't want this in the packet though?
Well, I agree with Jeff. I don't think we need to put, I don't know how it goes with FOIA, but you've got residents' names in there, you have employee names in there. I don't know that people are going to want their information out there.
But all of that information is FOI, is FOI-able, so.
Sure, it can be FOI-able, but how about we make it, you know, we take the time to sit there and write out the issues as opposed to giving the full dissertation of what was sent to us?
I don't know, I guess I'm for the transparency, but.
That's fine. I'm, I'm, I look at it differently. I'm like going, it's, I want to understand that there's issues in a given department or there's a residential, resident issue. I don't want to see, I want to see the details, but I'm not necessarily sure that I want that out in public that we sit there and put.
I agree with you, except that I think the public needs to know that we, that we actually are getting these things.
Okay.
And that, you know, we're aware of them. And so, you know, some things we can address and some things we can't. I mean.
They can all attend our meetings and have their voice in public speak as opposed to sitting there and dealing with their emails behind a computer. And that's just how I think. And I'm only one person on this.
Well, so why don't we, what's everybody else think? Scott, Jeff?
I, I am in favor of what Jeff McGuire is saying.
I am as well.
Yeah, because I'm, I'm just thinking from a resident perspective, if, if they're, if they're concerned about calling in because then they're, they're going to be publicly, their information put out there, they may not want to call in.
We're not, we're not putting their personal, I mean, we should be editing any letter that comes in for their, you know, their personal information, but if a resident calls in and makes a complaint, you know, I think it's important, A, that they know that we got the complaint and we were aware of it. And B, if there's a way for us to follow up or not, you know? I think with these, with this complaint log, we should also be putting a note as to, you know, we're putting notes as to what happened, who got referred to and why it was or wasn't addressed. And I think that's important for residents to see that. I mean, otherwise, they don't know how hard Eric's working behind the scenes. They don't know how much Scott went and looked at a tree and Jeff went and looked at something and, you know, I mean, you went and looked at something or I went and looked at something. They don't, they don't know that, you know, unless we tell them, so I don't know.
The only, the only thing I would have, the only issue I'd have is if there's complaints against employees or anything like that and if we have to take disciplinary action.
That's a different, and I.
It kind of draws a fine line there. If it's something against an employee of the town.
I fully would support that. If we want to pull out employee grievances, things like that, 100% okay with that. But anything else, if it's road work or tree work, tree or a lighting issue, whatever, I think that needs to be in here. If it's, if it's directly an employee, that's a different conversation because I think.
Yeah, that's an employee matter. Like, if a town employee wants, you know, wants to make a complaint that their printer is bad and they needed a printer or anything like that, I think it's, that's something that could be in there, but.
Right, right, right. Or even a resident against a particular employee. I think because those are personnel matters, those shouldn't be part of this, but.
Yeah, I think that should just be personal reserve matters.
Would you be okay with that, Jeff, if we just filtered out Mr. McGuire, since this was your?
I have no problem with the complaint log. I just think the complaint log needs to be modified.
Okay.
I mean, there's probably three complaints in here that I would never have put in the way they've put in. And I understand what Eric is doing. Eric is just laying it out there. He's, this is what it is. There's no, there's no filter and as far as I'm concerned, there should be a filter. So, you know, it's just my opinion. And Adrian, what you're asking for as far as employees, that's fine. I 100% agree with that. Those are the ones that, that I sit there and I look at. I go, those are things that should be in executive session and should be brought up with the five of us and we should discuss. And if we have a problem, we should, we should move forward, but putting them out kind of cause, gives me pause. That's all I'm saying.
Cool. Can we, so can we all agree though to start with, let's remove anything employee related from this complaint log for, for, for public consumption? And then beyond that, let's see what hap, let's go another month or two and see what it looks like. Can we do that?
That's fine. I would sit there, it's almost impossible not to sit there and have a complaint log and not identify the department. So you're going to have to identify the department and you may not be identifying individual employees and how it goes.
Well, I don't think you.
Personally would like to get the complaint log before it goes in the package. That's just my personal request.
Again, I think anything that's directed at a specific department slash employee should be removed. If it's about interaction with Public Works or it's about something else not getting done, I mean, you know, with the exception of Public Works, I mean, I think.
Why? If, if, if a resident complains that the tax collector's office is not open and, and they just want to make a complaint about that, that's something.
Again, but yeah. And I think that's where your filtering comes in, right? So there's a happy medium.
Hey, if there's going to be interaction and communication between us members, I am not.
Jeff and Paula, are you two okay?
Going to be very angry. I don't know if you see my face. I'm angry. Let's go. No.
All right. So. So Eric, try some administrative filtering, but give us as much as you can.
And I mean, I'm not comfortable with putting out the information that we're putting out.
I would like to see it in advance, Eric. I might be able to sit there and make recommendations before it gets into this package.
All right, so let's try that.
We should, right, review it. Right? Okay.
Why don't you just have me send it to you offline and not put it in the packet?
No, Adrian is not wrong about us being transparent. He's not. I'm not, I'm not sitting there. I agree, we should have the complaint log. The residents should know what people are complaining about and that we're trying to do something about it. I have no problem. It's just, it's very blunt. Right? I have a problem with that. So I would like to review it. If you want to give it to everybody to review in advance, no problem. That's, I'm good with that, but before it gets into this package, I would like to have a chance to look at.
Yeah, let's, well, fine, fine.
Okay, so do we have any other issues on the complaint log? Okay, all right, we're going to move on. So we're going to go on to the storm damage at Veterans Memorial Field.
That's kind of in the works. We're getting ready to replace the pump. Jay is still trying to get quotes from a fence guy just to straighten out the fence. We're going to use three of the large boulders we removed from the veterans monument as the boulders. uh, as the boulders across to keep people from being able to drive on the, the field uh, in the area, that's part of the Florida way, so that's what's going on with that right now.
If you need more boulders, I'll give you some. Send the truck up.
Eric, was that website I sent you of any help?
Not sure what you're talking about.
The surge suppression, you sent me a inquiry about the, uh, the well pump and the surge suppression?
Oh, I thought you were still working on that, I didn't.
No, I, I responded to you, I sent you an email.
Right, but I thought you, you were just emailing me to tell me you were still working on it.
Well, I just, I, I would, I would solicit a quote if you'd want me to, that's why I just, I gave you the name of the manufacturer that makes, I reached out to somebody, uh, one of my colleagues in Florida that deals with a lot of lighting protection and that company deals, it's, uh, they're an engineering company and they deal with, uh, surge suppression and they could, they could find something there for our, for our application. Um, I had an initial conversation with them and they said nothing's gonna survive a direct hit.
Sure.
It would just survive spikes and stray voltages that could come through the line from an indirect hit. So if we get hit directly, again, nothing's gonna save us, no, no grounding mechanism, anything, if it hits the pump, it hits the pump. But, uh.
Right, I mean, we do have, uh, the system was installed initially with a surge suppression system. But these. The electrician had recommended was that instead of two ground rods, you go, go with the fully bonded in-ground grid essentially.
Well, I, I could tell you having, still adding to my lightning strike, I'm at like 70K now cuz my whole house generator also pooped out, um, the only two things that um, that the insurance company says are effective, uh, the grounding grade doesn't matter, but they said there's two things, there's a fusible link that you can put in line that will blow out first and then there's a, a breaker that you can put in the panel, it's called an EMP breaker and that will also help. But beyond that, there isn't much, I think the EMP breaker was a couple hundred bucks and, um, and the fusible link is, is like 40 or 50 bucks, so.
Yeah, well, another way to do is you can put a contactor on the well pump feed from the breaker to the, to the, uh, pressure switch, that actually when the pressure switch comes on, you turn the contactor on which turns the pump on, so you electrically isolate the pump.
Yep.
That's another way to do it, um, the problem with those EMP breakers is they're really prone to nuisance tripping, so you may go down and your sprinkler may not work for a day or two cuz it might have a nuisance trip.
Okay.
That's one issue that you do have, uh, what I did like about the suppression company is they actually have health monitoring on it, so it has indicator lights that tells you if it's still good or bad, if you get a strike, it'll, it'll light up red if it's been, if it's been destroyed.
I, I'd be in favor of something like that, can we, is it possible for you to spec that for, for our application?
Yeah, I'm just gonna have to get together with Eric and figure out what we're gonna spec for a pump and the loads we're gonna have on that line and, um, I can get something, I can get a quote sent to us.
Okay, do we, do we need a new pump down there?
Yeah, there was information in this package about the pump.
I apologize, I missed that.
I missed it too, so, I'll look into that and then I'll, I'll reach out tomorrow and see if I can get something for the end of the week.
I mean, that's, uh, just, you, you do have that information that you can provide, Jeff, right?
Yeah.
I sent it to everybody, I think, right?
Uh, I believe so, I remember.
If not, tomorrow Scott, I'll call you if I can't find it.
Okay.
So while we're, while we're together here, you know, we should probably finalize this. Jeff, you're going to find out about what you know about putting a breaker in there or something?
Well, we can do a breaker, like I said, they're, they're subject to like some nuisance, there, there, those breakers are sub, uh, subject to nuisance tripping, so. Yeah, it's tough on irrigation system cuz we could lose three or four days or even a week and nobody's gonna realize it's not running, that's the problem. Let me just, let me look into the surge suppression and see what we can, see what we come up for a price, if it proves to be too expensive, well, we can go with a breaker like Adrian suggested. As a backup.
Cuz Lefran Boys has a new, uh, uh, arrester for that, a new, a new style or a new kind that he was telling me about.
Well, the company, the company I, I, I got is, they're, they're, it's an engineering company and that's what their specialty is designing these suppression modules for all kinds of applications, so if I give them my application, the load rating, you know, being outdoors, you know, and just, uh, I can, I can get a quote.
Scott, can you get more info on the arrester that Lefran Boys is talking about?
Sure.
Yeah, you sent it to me, sent it to me.
Yeah, if you can kick it to me too, that'd be helpful, thank you.
And at a minimum, before this pump gets put in, please put the breaker in, if it's only gonna cost us $200, they don't really care about nuisance tripping for that field. Uh, and, and I know Scott, that nuisance ends up on your plate, so we're gonna try not to have it, but it would be better that if something happened again, that at least that blink, breaker went and not the whole pump again.
Exactly, yeah.
That's my recommendation, um, so let's move on to, uh, request for qualifications for the Affordable Housing Plan, Eric?
Uh, that's pretty well taken care of. The, uh, Planning and Zoning Commission chose Bill Warner as the least costly, uh, vendor. Um, so we're just getting ready to, the attorneys looked at the proposal. Um, so we're just gonna sign the contract on that and let him get to work.
Okay, uh, and eight D, the request for proposal, the electrical on the town hall, there's no update on that?
No, cuz, you know, we've increased the scope of that project enough that it's gonna take a while to get everything together.
Okay, we're gonna move on to nine, new business, discussing following the Bunker Hill Road Bridge closure. I mean, I listened to what Eric had in his report and I realized that the state is going to be a couple weeks out. I would ask, what is the lowest load rating, smallest load rating that we can put on that bridge and at least get it opened up in a single lane?
Oh, you can put it pedestrians only if you wanted, I guess, but, um.
Obviously not what I'm talking about.
I guess you could probably do a six-ton load limit on that. Um, we'd have to buy the signage for it, but that would be possible, that's, as far as I know, that's the lowest practical load limit you apply.
Didn't the state already say that nothing has changed since the last inspection? That's, that was written there, right, Eric? So. Load rating hasn't changed either.
Well, they did not load rate it the last time.
Yeah, but he said that, he said that nothing has changed, that, that the reconstruction is better than original. So I would suspect that the load rating would be as same as the, the original.
Well, Scott, the only issue that I have is that if we're gonna be prudent, let's just sit there and wait for the state to give us a, a load rating, which is gonna wait until the middle of November.
We may already did, I read the, I read the, the report and it said that it's as good as it was when it was made. Wasn't it?
No, it was as good as its last review, which gives it a rating of a three and we realized there's been.
Right, and, and during that review, they said that there, there was no decrease in the load rating.
I, I am okay, I want to open it, I just don't know if we, we walk first before we run. But let people drive over with their, their, their vehicles, keep all heavy trucks off of it. I mean, Adrian is the one who's, who's got the most related to this bridge, he, he understands that, you and Scott, what do you guys want to do?
I just told you what I, I, I would say that it's the same as it was before, it got.
And the problem is, if we do a six-ton load limit, uh, there's not, unless somebody's down there all day long, people are gonna drive over the bridge no matter what if it's open. You're gonna have trucks going over.
But it's about our liability, we put the sign up. We told them what we wanted and they chose to do something different, if there's something that happens, I'd ask my town attorney.
If, if you guys wanna try to open it, um, to cars at this point, I have no problem with that, and then let's wait before we, to get an answer for anything else.
Dennis.
One-way only, correct, one-way, uh, stop signs on both sides?
Yeah, one lane, stop signs both sides.
That would be the, what we would propose.
With a six-ton load limit.
Okay, Dennis O'Brien, I believe you're still on, um. Now you can unmute if you can figure it out. What does a sign do and give us liability or minimize our liability? Okay, Paula, what is the phone application star what to unmute?
Uh, I think it's star six.
Because my town attorney has flip phone, I'm sure.
I know, well, maybe Eric can unmute him, you can do that manually, right, Eric?
All it says is, my only option is to ask to unmute, and I've asked him to unmute.
Okay.
But I don't have an option to unmute, I can mute him, but not unmute him.
I, I agree with the single lane and the, uh, the red, uh, the, uh, that cars, I'm, I'm just trying to think, sure, but I'm not coming up with it, but, um, personal vehicles, minimize load limit, stop signs in a single lane, I'm, I am all for that to get it open now and then we wait until the state gives us a, a more detailed report before we open it up.
What about emergency vehicles?
Um, I have no problem with emergency vehicles. Anybody else? Anybody having, and, and Scott, I do realize you want it opened up the whole way. I just think it's.
It's not that I want it, I'm trying to do it for the residents.
I understand.
I think we just get it open now and then they said they come back, we can just take the signs down and we're back to the old limits.
Yeah.
I don't think it's a big, I mean, most of the traffic on there is probably passenger car anyway, so we're not gonna impact the ton.
Passenger cars, thank you, Mr. Murray.
Yeah, it may take a bit because, I mean, it's not, it's not like we have six-ton load limit signs sitting around the shop, I don't think. So we'll have to order the signs.
Can we just have something that says no truck?
No, you could, you could probably say no double axle trucks or something like that.
Yeah, no truck traffic, you know?
Again, I'm sure there's signs we have in stock, so, but if, if no trucks you know, works for you, I can see what we've got or what we can get.
Just, you know, double axle, no three axle trucks, something like that.
Okay, um, Eric, work on the signs and then, uh, let's try to, uh, let's try to get that open just quickly as possible. Do we want to vote on that, just so we're all on the record? Okay, uh, I make the motion that we open Bunker Hill Bridge, uh, with weight restrictions and only for passenger vehicles in.
I'll second that.
Single lane.
I'd like to amend that for one lane only with stop signs on both sides.
Seconded the amendment.
Okay, okay, further discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed. Nobody. We're gonna move on now to, uh, the nine B, the Ram Multi-Use Turf Field Project. Vote's coming up in November. Anybody want to sit there and do anything related to this? Okay.
Do you propose anything?
Anybody?
I see there's a bunch of yellow signs around town.
That we don't support it or do support it?
Make a motion, do anything you want.
Is that what you're getting at?
Are you asking me?
Yes.
Murray.
I, I don't know, Murray, what, what are, what are the yellow signs?
There was a bunch of, uh, I saw a bunch today, um, in support.
Oh, boy.
There's one on, um, Townsend and 316 and there's a bunch around the lake near McGuire's house.
Oh.
Yeah. Right on McGuire's house, but nearby. And one on 87 as well, I saw it earlier.
Do we need to do anything with this, Eric?
Not unless you want to do something with it.
Alright, moving on.
I am.
Okay. Uh, the nine C Finance Department Town Audit Update, Admin Software Update.
Uh, so the town has closed out the last fiscal year, notified the auditor of that effect and asked the auditor to get cracking on the audit. You know, that's the only real update I have on that. Um, and Edmund, Edmund Software is a work in progress, we're using it. There are still some things that need to be worked out in the reports, very definitely.
Anything specific?
Uh, yeah, there's a couple of things that in the changeover got called out kind of incorrectly, I think, that we need to change. Um, it's just verbiage in the descriptions, I think that's part of it. And there's a couple of things that seem like they're either not reporting correctly or somebody has miscategorized. Um, but I don't need to go over those necessarily with you. Not that I wouldn't, if you really wanted to.
Uh, well, it appears that we were given the reports in the package and, uh, just from my cursory glance, glance, none of the revenues are, most of the revenues are not properly reported, so how much work is really getting into Edmunds?
Uh, that is the, the thing that needs the most work right now is the revenue side of the reporting, there's no question.
Well, it would also be great if when we get reports, we could get them in appropriate cycle, I mean, listen, this is the first set of reports I, I requested Eric to at least get us something in this package cuz we've seen very little from Edmunds, we've seen very little from the Treasurer's Department and Office related to information. We've got to start doing a better job, I mean, we paid money for this software. We should be getting reports that at least give us some basic, basic information, because I look at this and I go, hey, if you're not putting in your deposits, you're not reconciling your bank account, so.
Well, there's the next question, have we, where are we up to on balancing the checkbook?
Uh, it's balanced through the last fiscal year.
So we haven't balanced the checkbook since July?
Correct.
Actually, June. So. So it's, 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 I, I mean, it's not easy, but we, you know, that's what we spent money on the software, so it better, we better get better information and I asked Eric in our last, and you guys can add to it, I really just want to see on a monthly basis, I, you know, if you don't give me these reports, I just need to sit there and see a check register. Please provide a check register to us so that we can all see what checks were cut out of the system, actually to the people that they were written to and so we can just evaluate and understand if there's something that we missed or we want to ask Eric about, that would be extremely helpful.
It, Eric, is this a time issue or is there some other, I mean, I understand we had some personnel things that happened um, that may have encumbered some of their time. It, I mean, is this, is this something that we need to address or is this something that they're gonna catch up in time here?
Oh, I think they'll catch up in time, but you changed both personnel at the same time, you know, you changed software and it's gonna take a while to get that all worked out.
Okay. Well, I, I, I mean, I'm asking if we need to, do we need to authorize overtime or something, is there something missing in the equation that we could do to help them? I guess is what I'm asking.
I mean, on a limited basis, I've authorized some OT for Marina when she has gotten behind. Um, obviously, the finance director is a salaried position, so when she needs to work extra, she needs to work extra.
Okay.
Okay. And just as a side thing, if you're gonna give us reports, I think the report should go from the fiscal year, I mean, maybe these reports work differently, but the date range on this is September 1st through October 6th. I guess maybe that works, but. Okay.
Does, does, what is, Jeff McGuire, do you know what the holdup is with this Edmunds, why, why we're not getting these reports yet? What is not being entered or what's not happening that we?
I understand that, I think they're, they're definitely using it, Scott, I mean, I know the side that's, that's being. that's being done is the checks are being cut out of it. I mean, Adrian knows that, Eric knows that. So half the equation is in, right? It's the other half that's not in there. And if the other half's not in there, that means reconciliations aren't being done. I mean, it's a new visual for the report. I would just like to understand it. I would like to I would like to request that Sherry is at our next meeting and she's put first on the agenda so we can at least talk to her in a in the meeting. You know, it's a Monday. She should, I mean, I don't know if she works late, but please ask her to attend just so we can hear directly from her how it's going.
It would also be really helpful if on the expended year-to-date, if we can get a line in there that tells us the percent expended, so we don't have to sit there and manually do it over and over and over again.
That would really be good.
Yes, that is one of the things. There was an extra category on this report that gave that, but it's not working. So Edmonds has to do a bunch of things on the backend to actually make this. And it's not a, it's a report issue more than an actual calculations issue. But the report is quite frankly, still pretty screwed up in Edmonds and that's an Edmonds problem, you know, that they need to address.
Have we had or has Sherry or you or as a group, have you guys sat there and had a sit down with Edmonds about this stuff? And is this is this affecting the the school side as well?
Yes, it's affecting the school side as well because it's the same program on both halves. And yes, Sherry's in regular contract with Eric as they work through quite a number of issues with the implementation of this.
I mean, it's just sort of, for lack of a better word, pissing me off that we're paying for software that's not functional at this point, you know? And not a small amount at that rate. You know, Mr. McGuire's QuickBooks ideas looking way, way, way better at any moment now, but we're looking like we have egg on our face right now, you know?
I I don't.
You don't. You don't. You know, we we accepted this more expensive software because it was supposed to be workable and it's not looking that way right now.
It will, it will, listen, this is my problem with the whole thing. It will get working. It will work like Phoenix. It will be a a usable, auditable but doesn't mean that it's easy and it doesn't mean that you can find another employee to step in and do do it and operate it. That was the whole issue. That was the whole issue. That was everything about it. So anyway, Eric, please just have Sherry with us for the next meeting so that we can get an understanding of where she's at and what we need to do to help her in that department get this moved along faster so that we get appropriate reports on a monthly basis and we feel comfortable as to what's being reported to us.
Yes, for the record, I thought Sherry was going to be on this meeting. I don't understand why she's not, frankly, because we had this conversation this week.
Okay, but make sure for her benefit that she's first on the agenda. Like, I don't want to sit there and have her wait until we get to item nine and I want her right in the beginning, let's talk about it. Let's all get a feel for what we're doing, ask her questions and we'll be good.
Yeah, I'd like to know what the online deposit is versus the office and then total. Is online our credit card? Is that it?
From the tax collector?
On the deposits line, yeah, collections. Is that is that everything that's coming in electronically?
Yeah, probably mostly the tax collector, I would think.
It's mostly ACH, I would, I have to believe. It's the mortgage companies are sending the tax deposits. Yeah, because I mean, if you take this report and tie it together with the tax collector's report, you're you, it ain't right. So I mean, it's not really hard to figure out. Okay, so let's let's move on. So we're on a nine D, the Veterans Monument Park Upgrades. Jerry gave us a pretty thorough explanation of that. Scott, is there anything that you want to add to the Veterans Park? Any issues? Anything from your your eyes?
Really, I want to say that, you know, the reason why you guys see it all being done now was because we were we were tired of waiting for that person to do the irrigation. It was getting too late in the season. And so I just said, you know, I I talked to Matt Cordner and Ron Bissin and they said that we could get it going. So that's why I started just to do it. And it's coming together really well. Probably going to be filled in by, I would say, the end of the week.
Okay. All right, anybody else?
So I do have one thing, you know, when I look back at my notes, the Town Board of Selectmen has approved the Battlefield Cross. But you really haven't ever had a discussion about adding the flagpoles, number one. You haven't had a discussion about adding the POW monument for another. And I want to make sure you kind of understand what it is that Jerry's working on and that you're actually on board with it before we execute that. Because I don't think you've ever really weighed in on that and you probably should as a board.
Well, I that was kind of what I was asking as far as this whole cost conversation is that, you know, are all is all this stuff covered by donations?
It appears that all of it except the irrigation and and the electrical
And the power, right?
Yeah.
Which which we'd already agreed to and budgeted for, so.
Well, I guess what Eric is really
Yeah.
comfortable with all of the monuments that are going to be there. Do we want to approve that? I mean, as far as the flagpoles go, I'm going, we need new flagpoles. I mean,
Yeah, I mean, I think I think Jerry's doing a great job. And I, you know, I I appreciate what you're saying, Eric, that, you know, we need, do we need some type of oversight?
Here's here's the thing. We're get, we're gonna have a lot of, it's going to be very busy down there. And I'm kind of siding with Eric on this one that I would really like to see something on paper to see if
Like a master plan.
In the right, in the right direction here. There's, there's a lot of stuff going on. There's a lot of additional things that he wants to do and I I would like to see it myself on paper and make sure that it's all going to fit there and it's going to look right.
So Scott, can I ask you, because you're down there dealing with Jerry all the time, if you can sit there and get that accomplished for our next meeting?
It's it's, you're gonna, you can't just have somebody draw it on a piece of paper. You gotta, you know, have the whole area probably, now I hate, I know Adrian doesn't want to hear this, but it probably should be surveyed and then put have somebody put not, not so that, not so that we can place it anywhere, just so we can place the sizes on that parcel. Not not to actually locate it in some spot, just to see that all these things are going to fit on that parcel and how they're going to look. Because maybe they're not, maybe, you know, what Jerry is thinking about doing is maybe it won't work, you know? And maybe we'll be wasting space that we could have done it in a different manner, you know? That's all I'm thinking. I, you know.
Are we going to spend 10 grand on a survey?
No, I didn't. I didn't say that, Eric. I I, or Adrian, I just said that we need to, we need to look at this a little closer. That's all I'm saying. There's a lot of things that Jerry's thinking about doing that if if you, if you don't put it on, I mean, you could draw it out on the ground, but I I don't know if that's, you know, if it's the right way to do it.
So how do you want to address it? Because
I don't, I don't know, Adrian. I I'm, we're looking to you for some
I just told you what it's going to cost you for a survey.
All right, I'll sit there and I I will get with Sherry before the next meeting and we'll try to work with you know,
You're gonna do what, Mr. McGuire?
I'm going to get together with Jerry and try to get Eric, I'm assuming somewhere along the line, you have a layout of that and Jerry's already got it and we'll just try to get a ballpark of what Jerry is trying to accomplish in spaces, spaces that he's looking to fill and
Well, I mean, if you're gonna go that route, we can take this, the state survey that Eric dug up and have that printed out on the master plotter in the building department, at least have a sizable document that they can functionally look at and start laying out on there.
That would be helpful.
Well, we are, we already have that map.
But have you printed it out on a plotter so it's big enough to start laying stuff down on?
Eric, did we do that?
I mean, we had big prints of it.
Right, we did.
Certainly make more big prints of it.
Did.
Well, and let's have, let's have, take the time to figure out a scale or the scale of get a reference scale and then start laying out, even if you just start laying them out in blocks, you know?
And and Jeff McGuire, I I'm, I feel the same way you do. Jerry's doing a very good job down there. He's the best volunteer we have in the town. But we need to approve all these things, I think, also. We need to be able to see what he wants to do, where he's going to do it.
Yep.
And just
I don't think anyone disagrees with that. I just, I'm
Go back on the reins a little bit and see what's going on. That's all I'm saying. I I love what he's doing down there. He's a great, good, good person.
All right, let's move on to Personnel. Eric, just, I know you covered in your report, but briefly, the Building and Land Use Department Administrator position and the Assistant Town Court position.
Sure, the, uh, we've been advertising for, I don't know, three and a half weeks at this point for both positions. We have had a fairly good applicant pool for both positions. We're going to interview either eight or nine for the Building and Land Use Administrative Position. Carol and I were supposed to talk today about how to proceed with interviewing for the Assistant Town Court position.
So you were supposed to, but didn't?
We did not.
Okay. Any other questions related to that issue? No? Okay. Somebody get a text? All right. We're going to move on to Public Works Fall/Winter Schedule for tree roadwork. Eric?
Jay was going to be on in brief, but he had another commitment this evening, so you know, we're pretty well wrapped up with the tree work. Unless somebody has onesies and twosies we need to deal with, the major part of the tree work is done. You know, that went fairly well overall. There were a couple complaints, but you know, really only two and considering the size of the project we undertook, I think that's actually wonderful. You know, in terms of winter schedule, right now, Public Works has one of the trucks torn apart redoing the front brakes. Because the old International desperately needed front brakes. We did get the truck back. We had originally planned on welding in-house the the repairs to the International. We made a decision not to do that because we just frankly don't have enough crew availability right now to do everything we had to do. So we did outsource that and paint that. And so that's complete, that truck's pretty well put back together. Now they're working on the brakes. Rich is out doing, you know, re-mowing right now, so he's back on mowing. You know, they've spent quite a bit of time dealing with the park or the Veterans Monument Park. So that's come along pretty well. It's obviously a lot less expensive for us to use Public Works to do that than to outsource that.
What do we have left for whether it's basin work or or culverts that are either started or slated for this year that we haven't finished? And then secondarily, are we starting to put together, is that one of the projects we're going to work on this winter? We should have a a tree list for next year, so we know ahead of time and we can start working on that. And then obviously, I think my biggest concern is that this year we got sidetracked with all these other little projects and we need to figure out how to manage them better. So that we're not, you know, like for instance, whether it's, is there, is it better for us to look at having temp workers come in and do, you know, you know, traffic control for the tree company instead of our guys, you know, I mean?
That's what we did this year.
Okay.
That was 100% temp employees.
It was.
Yes, we don't have the personnel to do that right now.
No, I guess I'm just concerned. It seemed like we didn't, we got bogged down between the bridge and the park and and storm repair and you know, whether it's picking up behind the tree guys, we got bogged down. I don't feel like we got as much roadwork done as we really wanted to. We start talking about drainage work and that type of stuff.
No, we definitely did not get anywhere near the drainage work done. You know, the the problem comes in is that there's a million little things that everybody wants accomplished. And the question is, can you put all of them off and keep Public Works on just drainage projects? It is a problem. We spent a lot of time dealing with storm drainage or storm cleanup this year between the storms we had this summer and the repairs to the bridge. You know, I I'm frustrated that we didn't get anywhere near as much drainage work done. But then again, we pulled them off drainage to deal with the Monument Park. So
Can we start earlier next year on drainage?
Maybe.
Because I I felt like we started late this year personally.
Well, the problem is what aren't you doing if you start early? Number one, you're starting in the wettest season, so it's more difficult to do drainage because the water table is higher. You know, and two, there's a lot of other tasks they're doing early in the year, so it's not like you're just you know, it's problematic. It is.
I really think we need to brainstorm with Jay addressing some of that though, because you know, I just felt like we we got bogged down. I don't know if there's an easy solution, but we got to talk about it, so.
Yeah, it's something Jay and I have talked about a bunch of times because, you know, I'm not happy with that. You know, on the other hand, you know, there's an awful lot of little things that we still haven't gotten to yet that we know we should have gotten to a long time ago.
Eric, are we having guys, one of the reasons why I really want to go to these time clocks, are we having guys punch on and off with job codes, on and off jobs remotely?
No, I I don't think we can do job codes with Prime Pay. I don't think so.
Why not? Let's find out if we can, right? So if they can, if we could get a job classification, like for instance, we could have created one for the bridge and tracked all the time we spent on the bridge.
That's a good idea, Adrian.
You know, so we can start figuring out, instead of sitting, us sitting around going, gee, where did all our time go? We know where it went, you know? And that way we can start addressing where are our shortcomings? Where where do we possibly need to look at subbing stuff out or 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 bringing in maybe somebody that has more of a special skill in that area, you know? That's that's my suggestion, so.
Eric, what roadwork did you, are you planning to do for the rest of the year, if any, or?
Well, he's got about another month and then they're going to close the asphalt plant, so that's all he's got.
Well, I don't think we're really planning on doing any roadwork per se. I mean, we pretty much killed the roadwork budget, so there's not really any funds there unless we start taking away with the money we normally spend early spring before the July 1 start of the new budget. So we've spent that whole, you know, nugget. I had a conversation today with Jay because I know you've expressed a desire to have the area lakeside drive paved. So we're going to start looking at what are all up costs to do lakeside drive because that's going to be fairly expensive. I honestly question whether we can do that next year because that's going to involve some drainage work. And frankly, I don't think we'll get it to it next year. So if we do that project, we would be subbing everything out, you know, drainage sub days, you know, the So if we do that project, we would be subbing everything out, you know, drainage, sub days, you know, the paving, the whole, you know, whole shebang.
I mean, but this is something that we, you know, so we can start, instead of trying to spend doing a five-year master plan, even if we just go out two or three years and start doing a master plan of what we want to look at and have those numbers in play. And if you do it in a spreadsheet with a set, if you do, if we're gonna do that, do it in a master spreadsheet with Excel where you can sit there and say, this is based on this much per, you know, this much per ton of asphalt. So you can update that spreadsheet every year by just updating the asphalt cost and you automatically update all of your expenses. You know, instead of having to go through and manually adjust everything, you know? So if we start building a database like that and then we can adjust it as we go, and we know, we can start approximating number of hours, you know, how many people we need on it and start building out that master schedule. Like, that's really what I want to see Jay doing, is start, we need a, you know, a dry erase boards like right behind me where you can start figuring out a schedule and plugging it in, you know? And we should have that master schedule going so that guys start walking in in February and they see March, we're doing this, April, we're doing this. And we can also start seeing if we're getting behind and figure out, hey, we're getting behind on this. What do we need to shift? What's a priority, you know? So.
Jeff, is it possible I can talk for a minute here?
Absolutely.
I forgot to talk about something, irrigation. I forgot to update that completely, because there was a, there's a man that is donating all the topsoil for the whole park. And Matt Corners doing all the hydro seeding. So, you know, it was the dirt for that was a pretty substantial sum. And he's gonna donate it all. I was just wondering if we could write up, if Eric could write up a letter of appreciation and we could all sign it or something, or do something.
I think that's a great idea.
If you really want to be nice to him, figure out what it costs you and put it in the letter so he can deduct it.
That would be even better.
Okay.
Screen topsoil is, you know, 16 to 20 bucks a yard right now, so 17 yards to a truck.
Right.
Can we, can we add to the list a letter to Matt and Ron? I mean, they're-
Yeah.
They're doing a lot of work down there, too.
All those guys, yep. I don't think we should let this slide this time. We should take care of these guys.
Okay. I think we're all for that, Scott. Thank you. Do we have any other issues related to that topic?
Okay. Yeah. Again, I'm sorry for dragging that out. I just, I want us to start getting prepared ahead of time instead of waiting till last minute on this stuff, that's all, you know?
9G, the Community Senior Center Building Committee update. Any of you guys have anything for that?
There's nothing real, I guess.
On Thursday, right? Is that right?
Meeting on Thursday, correct. It's gonna be a focus on needs versus wants for the architect.
Then you guys have done one visitor already?
I was not part of it. I don't know, Scott went with the group.
A visit to the- Kathy's-
Another community center.
Kathy's gonna give us a line by line, whatever she- She went to the, to visit those different community centers, senior centers in different towns. She took pictures of it all. She's gonna be telling us on Thursday night.
Okay.
So.
Okay, so.
Did, did the actual, did you, did Eric give the actual job to the guy yet? Did, is Eric around?
Yes.
Yes, this contract's been signed.
Yes.
He gave it to him.
It's in the packet.
Good.
Okay, so we'll move on from there. Let's move on. So we're moving to the connectivity grant progress. Since Eric is not here, that progress is complete. We're gonna move on from there. We'll come back. The DEP grants in our packet were two, we had talked about these two grants. One is the Coventry Grant to assist with their link up to one of the trails, and then there's the other one, which is a resolution to support a town administrator. So why don't we just move forward with this? Does anyone have any issues with the grant application that Coventry is doing for the Nathan Hale Loop? I think we talked about last meeting, we're all in favor of it.
Yeah, we have no input in it whatsoever, correct? And it's not doing anything properly.
No, they're, no, Jeff, that's not true. They're gonna be putting a a parking area on that 18 acres on Bear Swamp Road, right?
I do believe that that was the case.
Okay, now you're refreshing my memory a little bit.
Yeah, Jeff, you had some reservations, I thought.
Yeah, I didn't, I'm not, I'm not really, and the town-
I thought you had some reservations.
And the use of the town crew to do that, I'm not, I don't. What's everybody think about that?
I actually think we should revisit it once the trail is complete.
Well, it's not even that. Coventry wants to sit there and provide, you know, wants to go after a state grant for that. Or a D recreation trails grant.
I think time's running out, right? We need to give them some sort of insight and answer soon. I remember they're trying to get this very quickly.
I mean, this just goes back to what we were just talking about, though. It's just, it's always a project. There's another project to throw at Public Works that we don't have time for.
Eric, we're talking about the Coventry Grant. Please explain to us the costs associated with this grant for the town of Andover.
The Coventry Grant shouldn't have any, other than we probably should agree to do the actual physical work other than the tree clearing, which will pawn off on distinctive.
Yeah, what's that gonna cost?
Will grant fund all the material, so it's a question of time. And that's gonna chew up at least 10 days of Public Works' time to do it.
So two weeks?
Yep.
And why can't we get this outsourced with the grant funding?
Well, because all these grants are 80/20. So the, we set it up to pay for, them pay for the materials and us pay for labor. We could, I guess, try to outsource the whole thing and pay and ask for more money, I guess, if you want to do that.
Well, I'm assuming, what's the total that Coventry is asking for?
I don't know, honestly.
So why do we have to put up 20%?
We're not putting up any money whatsoever. The only thing we are going to agree to is if we wanted to get a parking area out of it that we would use our Public Works to do the labor for the parking area. If you don't want a parking area, then we just don't include it and we don't pay anything and it doesn't take us any time.
Oh, this is a Bear Swamp.
I mean, if you don't want a parking area, then let's just scratch that from the grant and let's roll on.
I mean, what's your take on it, Eric? My point was that this is, again, it's, we just keep adding things to Public Works' list.
I agree, it's problematic. You know, but, I mean, it's all a question of what your priorities are.
I mean, given that we have the new connectivity stuff going on and we're working on our own parking area there, do we need another one right now?
I mean, it depends. Do you want there to be access from the town of Andover to Nathan Hale State Forest? It's really that simple.
Isn't there already plenty of access to Nathan Hale Forest?
From Coventry, sure.
So they have to drive over the line to go in there?
Yeah, most people park in Nathan Hale Homestead, to be honest.
Man, I hate to say it, but I would exit them.
Okay, not a problem. Done. Let's work for me.
Yeah, the only issue I have is, is like, who's gonna maintain this once we make it? Is, you know, are people gonna be hanging out, leaving litter and stuff, or are we gonna have to go and clean it, you know, regularly and-
We're gonna have to plow it.
Have to plow it.
Absolutely.
The problem is, right now, we have trails that we can't even maintain. It's like, I haven't, I mean, I've been, I've been mowing last couple of years, this section around Chamberlain Pond. I haven't even got there this year to even do it. It's just, we don't have enough people right now to even maintain what we have. That's the problem.
Yeah, I think we need to focus on our other priorities right now, and that's, it's a want, not a need, so.
Okay, so you'll approve the project, but you don't want a parking area?
Yeah.
Okay.
But there's, there's, so the town has no stake in this, town of Andover?
That's not me, Billy.
What do you mean about no stake? I mean, we're gonna have some signage put up in the town, but that's it.
And what else?
We're not proposing anything in Andover other than some share the road signs.
Okay.
The only thing Andover was gonna add to it would be a parking area for trail access.
I mean, the only thing I would suggest is, is there any way we could go back to Coventry and say, hey, we can put the parking area in, but we just don't have the labor to do it. If you guys want to provide the labor.
Why would they care about a parking area in Andover?
Part of their trail system would be part of their grant, correct?
Yes, but they're not gonna spend the labor to build a parking lot in Andover. You guys sure wouldn't consider doing any of the labor to help them build the road through Coventry, would you?
Probably not.
How much are we gonna use it?
No, all right, let's just move on. Here we are at that, Jeff.
Yeah, I'm fine.
Are you going to make-
Completely.
Are we going to make a motion to support the grant even without the parking area?
We don't need to. It's their grant.
Eric, can you mute? Please.
We don't need to make a motion. It's their grant, Jeff.
You already agreed that you were gonna support it. The grants get a lot stronger when they're inter-town, and if you look at it, a lot of the stuff that occurs, the on-road portion of the trail is in Andover. So if that's going to occur, you probably should support it.
But we already did that. We already said we would, right? You just said that, Eric. We've already said we would support it, but-
Last meeting, we did not, I don't believe we passed a resolution supporting it. Did we? Refresh my memory, because I cannot remember. Eric?
Not that I know of, unless you did it while I was using the facilities.
Am I crazy, or did you just not say that we already said we would support it?
He just said that.
We did. Last meeting, we said, we had a conversation that we would support it. I am sitting there saying we did not pass a resolution to support it. Okay, I'm gonna make a motion that we make a resolution of support for the grant application to DEP recreational trails program by the town of Coventry for the Coventry Nathan Hale Loop.
I'll second.
I'll amend your motion to say that we authorize the town administrator to write a letter thereof and explain that we'll support with signage, et cetera, et cetera.
So there's a resolution that I sent you. If you agree with the verbiage of that resolution, Carol Lee will just add your signatures to it and we'll send it off and it will be done, if that's acceptable to you.
Which is what I read, correct?
Correct.
Without the parking area.
So they have nothing to do with the parking area?
Yeah, he sent an email with proposed-
motions.
It's a very generic support resolution. I mean, we're not saying that we're committing to do anything. It's not our grant. It's not within the grant. If they write it in the grant, all right, we don't build the parking area.
It will help Coventry.
I believe. There you go.
So we gotta, I mean, I know, Adrian, you were trying to amend, but the way Eric wrote it is 8I1 Resolution of Support for Grant Application to DEP Recreational Trails Program by the Town of Coventry for the Coventry Nathan Hale. Paul is second.
All in favor?
All in favor. I'm trying, I'm trying to read his actual resolution. Because you have two there. You have one and two.
Correct, the other one's for a different-
The other one is for 316.
Fine.
Okay, all those in favor? Aye. All those opposed? No. All right, so now we have the second grant that Eric is working on. And Eric, do you want to explain that one?
Sure. So at your last meeting, you decided that the town should apply to DEP for a grant to
Fund the Trail Design.
Design for a multi-use trail along Route 316, essentially tying in the rail trail with school road. So that's what I'm in the midst of.
Yep.
It's due November 1st, which is before your next meeting.
Yeah.
And because it requires a match by the town of Andover, I am not authorized to submit that without resolution of the board.
All right, so I'll make a resolution to support and authorize town administrator apply for a grant with the DEP recreational trails program for multi-use trail connection between the Center Street Rail Trail Access Point and School Road along Route 316. And this grant would be funded to fund the trail design at an 80/20 town supply point percent.
I second that.
All right, further discussion? All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All right, all those opposed? No. All right, let's move on to 9J, a town-wide Christmas caroling 2021. Paul O'King.
Okay, last year we put together something for the residents. We went around town. And it wasn't really a town-wide event, but it just happened to be that the board members were doing it, so Adrian and I would like to propose bringing this back, but have it as a town-wide event, include the community this time and kind of expand on the idea. So we were thinking, we're gonna learn from last year. And we'll have designated stops and a route that we'll share on our town website, our Facebook page and flyers. And we also want to get some other organizations involved and maybe have a fire truck in the front, fire truck in the back. We can have a trailer for our board if you so choose to join us again, and then put it out to the community and invite maybe the scouts, the PTA or cool or whoever else wants to join in on the fun. Adrian, you want to explain more?
Yeah, basically what we're thinking is if we did it as a, as a way to raise money for some of the nonprofits in town, so we could have a fee to put a trailer in, like say, I don't know, a hundred bucks or something. For a hundred bucks, you could put up a trailer, decorate it, you get to come and sing along. We allow the residents to vote on Facebook who had the best trailer, something like that. And we'll do like first, second, third prize to their respective community organization, so.
We want to get a committee together, so we can have some input from, you know, a community member. Adrian and I would be on the committee. And we would like to ask somebody from the firehouse to be on the committee and, and somebody else who would be, it would make sense to have on there, but it's, December will be around the corner, so we wanted to start having the conversation tonight. And, and hopefully get the word out and get the committee formed and meet a couple of times before December and pick a date. And then this way, we can get things rolling.
I mean, we're definitely gonna need help with logistics. Like, I need to probably talk to you, Jeff, about, is there a way for us to I mean, we're definitely gonna need help with logistics. Like I need to probably talk to you, Jeff, about, is there a way for us to broadcast on a radio frequency or something so that we can, instead of having one float that had music on it, we could either have all the floats synced or we could broadcast on a radio, a small, you know, shortwave radio receiver, just a short distance so that as we're going by, people can pick up the signal and have this, have the music there.
We could, it's just, I don't know, technically we'd have to look into it. I think last year we just tried to cover too much ground. I think we maybe just kinda did a parade type thing and just kept it like maybe towards the lake area.
Yep. No, that, we're definitely kinda thinking that.
The, the problem is, I'm just worried about getting a bunch of people in trailers and stuff riding around town, cause last year it was a little, we had some sketchy moments as far as.
Right, and I think that's because we're trying to rush to all these different locations.
Yeah.
I think we kinda do like, we would do, you know, Paul and I talked about, maybe we do something at the field. We do something at the school. And then do a lake, that type of thing, you know?
Yeah, cause we have to, we have to consider parking for the vehicles that are, that are participating.
Yep.
And then parking for the people that are coming to listen. So we were thinking, start at the town hall of the school, cause there's plenty of parking there, like we did last year. Go to, go to, you know, the veterans fields because there's good parking there. And, and then.
And then do a lake loop.
Yeah, and then call, call it a night. And if we share the, the spots or the designated spots early, then you know, before we're going out and people know, okay, well, I'm gonna, I'm gonna be there and we'll share designated times. We're not gonna do the lake loop like we did last year where we're stopping as frequently.
And we could, maybe we could close like across street, like maybe island or something. We close that so people could park there and gather on the end of it type of thing, you know?
Yeah, I, I would think two stops on the lake. We're not gonna do like we did last year where we're stopping however often. Because that's just gonna, it's, it's gonna be dangerous and it's gonna prolong the night like it was last year, so.
Yeah, I mean.
Have you talked to Carol Lee about this at all?
Uh, nope.
I think we should probably, this probably should go to the recommission.
Okay.
I would probably go to the recommission first, make it a recommission event.
I think it's, I think it's a great idea.
Well, our only concern is that we wanna, we know we wanna ramp this up. By the time we get this rolling and start having meetings, we could be in the first week of November.
Yeah, I just wish I would've known. They just, the recommission just had their meeting tonight at six o'clock.
Yeah.
So they could have discussed it. I just wished I would've known a little bit.
Why don't you just carol at the gazebo? And that way nobody gets run over and you're not driving down the road with drunk people in the back of trailers.
Well, first of all, I, I don't think we were looking for drunk people.
No.
They make, they make horrible calories.
And I will guarantee you, there was not one drunk person on that trailer.
And the whole idea, I, I see what you're saying, Eric, about keeping it in one, in one spot. I think the idea about bringing it around town was it's like a parade, right? So it's, you're driving, you're driving around, you're decorating these vehicles. And it's a parade, but we're also singing to the public, so.
Right. All right, so, so. Well, you know, uh, what's this? Let's try to get the recommission to hold a special meeting if we can. And you know, if we need to, if, if the recommission feels accordingly, we could do something like they do a trunk or treat where they, they judge them. We could still do trailers like floats. And we could maybe park them in the school parking lot and have everybody go around and judge them, you know? We could do something. I, I still think we wanna do something like that, you know, akin to that, so.
Right, right. You can do decorate, decorate a vehicle with the Carol, you know, caroling. Sure, sure. Okay.
We'll figure something out. We'll talk to, I'll talk to Carol Lee and see if she can, if she can drum up some support and. But I guess we wanna make sure you guys weren't against it and before we started running with this.
Right, and we, we wanted it to be a community-involved event, so not just, you know, last year was great. And it was something that we brought to the town, but we're thinking this would be like a nice community event and then benefit the people watching, the people who are, are the, the organization that's getting money and getting people, you know, a lot more people involved if they, if they choose to decorate a vehicle, so.
You, you can, you can do that, but you know, last year was a lot of fun and for the people that were at their houses that.
Right.
It was an enjoyable experience. I mean, that doesn't happen in Andover.
Yeah, I think that's why we were thinking to recreate that, you know, it's sort of like how, you know, Will Mantic has the, you know, has the boombox parade and they have Thursday and some of that. Something that involves the community and goes around to them, you know? So.
I mean, I have no, you, you guys can get it organized.
Right.
Less stops, a better route.
Yeah, a much shorter program, so.
And maybe what you do is, you don't offer it out that everybody can be in the parade, and I understand that Paula is what. Why don't you just sit there and ask people who wanna participate to create a stop in their neighborhood? And they get all their neighbors out and they come and carol and at a certain time when we try to get the trailer over to them. But anyway, there's plenty of things that you guys can do, so let's get the recommission involved in it to begin with. And, and then I'm sure that everybody on this board will gladly participate.
Yeah.
Okay, great.
Still have my elf costume.
Well, I'll sit there and say everyone on this board will participate. Our town administrator, you know, you honestly, if anybody should be the Grinch.
We need a Scrooge.
Yeah, Scrooge, you're the Grinch. Anyway, let's move. So animal nine K, the animal control officer with NICAG, Eric.
So I'm gonna recommend that we try for a while to use NICAG to provide animal control services to the town. The cost is basically three dollars and fifteen cents per capita per year. We would do it on a quarterly basis. In other words, try it a quarter at a time. Make sure we're happy with the service they're providing us and they're okay with providing us the service. That's kind of my recommendation.
Where, where would the pound be for Andover dogs?
Killingly.
Yeah. That's forty-five minutes from.
You got it.
From someone's, some, some young lady that's pup is missing and she has to drive forty-five minutes to get her dog back.
I would gather that most Andover residents would know well before NICAG gets somebody on site that their dog is missing. I would hope they would know, so.
I'd like to make a motion then. I'd like to motion authorize the town administrator to enter into contract with NICAG to provide animal control services for the town of Andover at a cost of three fifteen, three dollars and fifteen cents per capita.
I'll second that.
All right, further discussion? All right, all those in favor? Aye. All those opposed? All right. Nine L, the twenty twenty-two meeting schedule. That is in our packet. Where is it? Does anyone have a problem with the dates? I know Valentine's Day is one of those. It's one of my favorite holidays. I really don't wanna be on a Monday meeting. But I will.
You have a favorite holiday?
One of my favorite holy holidays.
It's a holy holiday now.
It's a holy day.
Okay.
Marvelous holiday.
Yes, it's marvelous.
Fabulous.
So does anyone have a problem with the schedule as it's currently outlined?
Valentine's Day is horrible. Can't do that one.
I know.
Every, every day should be Valentine's Day, gentlemen.
Right.
Paula, I, you are my favorite select person without a doubt. Anybody with, I, I've tried to find it. I, I must've went too far. There it is. So Monday, the tenth, Tuesday, two fourteen, three fourteen, four eleven.
Where is it in the packet? I'm looking for it.
On page twenty-two. It's, we got past it cause we went to the treasurer reports, so it's twenty-two. Page twenty-two.
So what date can we move Valentine's Day to, Jeff?
No.
No, no need to move that.
It's a Monday. I'll, I'll take my lovely bride out on a Saturday. It'll be fine.
My, my only comment is we're gonna probably have the same challenge on Wednesday, October twelfth, because that's, that's gonna be another board, that's gonna be a Board of Ed meeting.
So let's move that to.
I'm, I'm still looking for the darn calendar. I can't find it.
Oh my goodness.
Your pages are different than mine, apparently.
Eric, share your screen.
Not a whole calendar, Adrian.
No, not share the screen. Find it in your package. Let's go.
I got finance department reports before that.
Yeah.
Wait before that. Page twenty-two. It should, your PDF, there it is. You got it?
Table, okay.
Table. So Eric, also all of the date, the, the holiday terminology, please remove from the list. So even Valentine's Day, I don't really wanna know that it's a holy day, so that would be helpful for the rest of the board. So please get rid of it. Anybody have any problems with any of the dates? Like, do they know about, if it's anybody's birthday?
Well, as Paul already pointed out, the ten, ten twelve.
So let's move it to ten eleven.
Good. And when do you wanna do, three fourteen? I'm sorry, two fourteen.
No, we're not moving that. Just leave it. Unless anybody else is really wanna move, wanna move that, so.
I wouldn't mind moving it, actually.
Okay, so let's move that one to.
Fifteen.
Fifteen's fine.
You're a big softie, Adrian.
Don't tell anybody.
Oh my gosh. Okay, so we are one ten, two fifteen, three fourteen, four eleven, five nine, six thirteen, seven eleven, eight eight, nine twelve. Ooh, that's a tough one for me. Ten eleven, eleven fourteen and twelve twelve. Okay? All right, so Eric, I don't know if you had a motion in there for this.
I do not, but you can just make a motion for that.
All right, make a motion to accept the calendar with the adjustments to the February date to fifteen and the October date to ten eleven. Further discussion.
Seconded.
I'm gonna second it. Sorry, I was gonna move on. Further discussion on those dates? All right, all those in favor? Aye. All those opposed? Not there, okay? So we're gonna move on to item ten, approval of the meeting minutes for Monday, September thirteenth, twenty twenty-one, our regular minute, meeting minutes. Everybody got any changes, any issues with the minutes? Okay. Somebody make a motion? I make a motion to accept the minute meetings for the Monday, September thirteenth, twenty twenty-one, regular meeting.
Second.
Seconded.
All those in favor? Aye. All those opposed? Were you opposed, Adrian, or are you in favor?
I was in favor. I'm sorry, I had delayed.
Really? Yes. Finance department reports, we talked about those already. Does anybody have any issues related to the finance department reports?
No, just want the extra column.
Okay, Eric, please.
They're working on it.
Revise the agenda in the future to actually the reports that are included, because this is older information. You don't usually include all those reports, so just include or put on the agenda the reports that you're gonna put into the package. Budget appropriation transfers over expenditure requests. Eric, do we have any?
I don't think so.
I didn't see any either. Item thirteen, tax collectors report. That was further down. Okay, so we had two sets of data in this one. So it appears so far the town has collected three point five, three million, five hundred sixty-nine thousand, seven hundred and eighty-eight dollars. The taxes for the period of this fiscal year. Excuse me. In August, we collected six hundred and six thousand dollars and in September, we collected a hundred and eighty, a hundred and seventy-nine thousand dollars. Any other questions on the tax collectors report? Reports. We have four refunds to vote on. Refund of excess payments for different taxpayers. Somebody wanna make a motion to approve those or Eric, do we even need to approve those? I don't think you had that in your motions.
I did not. I should've made a motion for that.
Okay. I am anti-refunds. I will not make that motion.
I make a motion that we extend the refunds as noted in the tax assessors or tax collector's report.
Second.
Discussion, the total is for nine hundred eighty-three dollars and thirty-two cents.
To four individuals.
Or taxpayers. So, anyway, all those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Those, no, move on. All right, assessors report. There is a report in here from the assessor. Okay. Any questions on this? I did have one question, Eric, and if you could find out, I would like to know. It's like, how can a one vehicle have been totaled twice? There is a, there is a vehicle in here for a taxpayer that was, it says totaled on the report twelve nineteen and totaled on the report twenty twenty. It's the same VIN number. I, I just questioned that. Just silly little thing. I like to know.
Wait, where are you? What am I missing?
Taxpayer Nadine Gray.
Yeah, it's in there twice.
I just wanted to know how it could be totaled twice. And totaled for two different amounts.
It's two different years.
Two different years. I, I think what they did is they made a mistake because one doesn't look like it has an amount. Doesn't have whatever the adjustment, the original, anyway. Doesn't make sense, but just like the moment. Anyway, anybody else? Okay, we'll move on to the departmental reports. There are reports in here from the fire department. I did not see the burning official. I saw the Andover Public Library. I saw the resident state trooper. I saw the senior transportation. I saw the library. Anybody have any questions related to any of them? Oh, the registrar voters also had their. Anybody else? Nothing? Okay. We're gonna move on to item sixteen, correspondence. Eric, I didn't see any.
I did not either.
We're gonna move on now to public speak. Let's move through our list. Diane Chocat, would you like to participate?
No, I'm good, thanks.
Thank you very much. Dorothy Yeomans.
I just appreciate you working hard on the bridge. It means a lot to a lot of people on this side of the Hop River.
All right, and then we have one phone number. Two, three, four, five, Enzen. You, would you like to participate?
Two, three, four, five is me.
No.
No?
Okay, then I have five, four, seven, five.
Oh.
My bad.
That's okay. I, I've got plenty to say if you wanna hear it.
We'll wait. All right, well, let's move on, so I think and Eric, why is it not on the agenda, the executive session?
Because you're working off of the wrong, the old agenda.
Yes.
He has been, which was updated on Friday and reposted. So I'm not sure exactly.
Was it nine E, I think, right? Is we have to address?
I am sorry, I was, I was, Paul, I have the website. I am sorry, I was, I was, Paul, I have the website up, I'm using the website.
Some of them are, it is on there, Jeff, and some of them there aren't.
Okay, well, let's make a motion.
By the way, Eric, can you pass on to Roberta and the assessor that we appreciate that they are actually doing an activity log that we, like we had asked for, thank you?
Yeah.
Very much appreciate that.
They are. All right, so what am I missing, my agenda update, let me find it.
In the future, when putting these together, can we also put documents at the end in the order that there are in the, rather than throwing them in the middle?
Which documents specifically are out of order?
Well, so for instance, it goes into the, I'm working off the, I'm working off the, the agenda and we go into the revenue reports when we go into finance. But then we have to go all the way through the revenue reports to get down to the bottom. You know, so instead of splitting the agenda up, list the whole agenda. And then list the reports after them in the order appropriately.
Okay.
I'm not actually sure what you're.
Okay, so it goes finance eleven and then budget twelve, and in between I got ten pages, twelve pages?
It's just an order issue.
Yeah, so keep, so that when you look at the agenda, if someone else looks at the agenda or I look at the agenda, I see nine, ends at L and then and then it jumps, right? I have to go through all these other things. Instead of putting the document, put the whole agenda and then put the documents in the order that they fall on the agenda.
All right, we can deal with that after, so.
That, that's how we've done it in the past, this is a new layout. It is why it's frustrating me.
Okay, so who wants to make a motion and go to executive session? So I'll make a motion, we go to executive session. What do you got? I haven't made the motion yet, you're quick.
I said so moved.
I love you. All right, executive session under Connecticut general statute one dash two zero zero six A to discuss item nine E. Is that the right reference, nine E?
Yeah, personnel, building, land use, admin and assistant town clerk.
Wow. It's eight, I, I don't know which agenda we're using. So we're going to go with nine E because I think that's the first agenda, nine, I think it's supposed to be eight E.
It should have been eight E, that was an error on our part.
Okay, so.
Yeah, I used those, I used the same one off the website, so. I guess the website didn't get updated.
Two on the website, so I used the wrong one as well, but now I went, I got the newer one and so it's.
So the, the problem occurred is that Scott asked at the last minute on Thursday.
Scott's fault.
To adjust the agenda. And there, the only person I had there capable of updating the website is Roberta, and that's not what she does for a living.
It's no big deal, it really, no big deal. It's, it's just, it always happens, it's, I just, I just, if I'm going with whatever the final one should be, my motion should be to discuss item eight E.
Correct.
Scott, you seconded it, right?
Yes, sir.
All those in favor, aye. Okay, let's go. Thank you very much, everybody for joining us, we appreciate it.